Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to the meeting. It's a little bit after seven. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danahy. Oops, I should wait for Lorraine.
Yeah, I was like, where am I missing?
Do you want me to go get her?
I'm sure she's coming.
There she is.
Moving on to other business?
Yeah.
And in conclusion.
Seconds of the minutes? So we, uh... You all settling in?
Yes.
Great. So we, um...Sean made a motion to accept the agenda and John seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Great. Are there any Watkins this evening? Seeing none, we'll keep moving on. The reporter at the town, Acting Town Administrator. Al, how are you?
Thank you.
Good.
Just two items I want to pass on. One was the...we're issuing a request for services for a OPM or owner's project manager for the senior center project. We would expect to have applications back by Christmas time, which point then the Public Building Committee will review those, select an OPM, and then the OPM will be brought onboard to help us select an architect to move the project forward. What we'd be asking the architect...we'll select an architect and be ready to go at town meeting based upon if town meeting agrees to fund the architectural work, preliminary architectural work, then the architect would come onboard probably in the May-June timeframe, begin the work in preparation for then doing full architectural and engineering design, and then at that point give us a construction cost estimate such that by late fall, we'd be able to, at special town meeting, look for funding for a senior center project.
Great.
And then following that, there would be most likely a dead exclusion override vote, probably in the December-January timeframe. Okay?
Great timing.
Good. Secondly, um, the...we have a new building in town, a new old building. So we're taking the what was called a central fire station. The central fire station is being repurposed for two purposes. The...what was previously the quarters area is being converted into offices for the Health Department and Social Services. You may have seen some work going on improving accessibility of that building, dressing it up, getting rid of some of the shrubbery and stuff. There's work going on inside to create a good workspace, accessible workspace for our Health Department. They will move...I can't give you a timeline for that yet, but that work is underway. They should be there by the spring. The other portion of the old central fire station, which we're now calling Central Garage, is being repurposed. There are three bays there. One bay is going to be offered to the school and for minor bus repairs and changing of oil, replacing light bulbs, not heavy-duty work, not pulling out engines and that sort of thing, but give them a workspace that's indoors, offset some costs they're incurring outside with outside rental of storage and bus repair facilities. They'll take over one bay. Our Facilities Department will take over another bay, and the Grounds Department will take over the third bay. The Grounds Department will use their bay, for instance, for equipment that is used over here on this central campus so that they won't have to be hauling back and forth lawnmowers, the snow plow machine, a sidewalk snow plow machine that's used on the high...on the school campus and that sort of thing. And the Facilities will use it for interim storage of materials that they need to have a place to store. They've also got a truck that's used by the carpenter that we use for doing handyman work around town. So those...that building is being repurposed and put back into good use.
Great.
Thank you.
Good idea. Any questions for Al?
Just the timeframe on the public buildings voting on the OPM for the senior center was January?
Yes.
All right, so...
We were soliciting proposals, given about a two-week turnaround. Proposals will come in, the Public Building Committee Commission will then interview those. The chairman of the Council on Aging has asked to help with that endeavor, and so it's fine. He'll participate, help interview the OPMs. Ultimately, the Public Building Committee will have to then decide which one they want to choose, make a recommendation. You'll need to approve the contract, and then they'll get started.
Can we ask that, you know, Al might have moved on by then? Can we ask Jim to sit in on those if it's not too much?
You can ask him when he comes here.
Right. Okay.
Who?
Jim Boudreau, the new town administrator.
Oh, yes. Oh, well. He'll be on board.
Right. But I'd like him to go to those meetings if he could and have a hand, you know...
Starting in January, yeah.
His experience in building buildings and stuff like that, I think, would be helpful.
Nancy and I spent the majority of the afternoon with Jim Boudreau. Nancy has done an excellent job, and actually, all the departments have done a great job of getting their budgets in on the timeline that we specified, got them in, and Nancy...Nancy turned this massive amount of information around into a digestible format so that we could see where we were overall in our budget and then begin working through town department, town department by town department on what we need to adjust in order to have the revenues match up with the expenditures. And we went through all of that this afternoon with Jim Boudreau as well as several other topics. So we're beginning to bring him onboard with things that we know that he's going to need to carry on with.
Great. And just to remind everybody, I actually ran into Jim at the...when Santa came into the harbor this weekend with two of his kids, and he is...I think his last day in Linfield is the 15th, and then he'll be starting here right after New Year, so...
Yes.
But I know he's going to be in here off and on in between those two periods.
Right.
Just to keep apprised of what's going on, so...great. Anything else for Al? Karen? Great. Before we get on, obviously, I'm not Laura Curran. She got a last-minute kind of work event that she had to go, so she couldn't be here today, but she's updated us on all the stuff she was dealing with, so hopefully she's watching. Moving on to the first item on the agenda is discuss an update of a general bylaw amendment to Article Section 20730, Capital Planning Committee, Kathy Curran, Town Clerk.
Good evening, everybody.
Kathy, good evening.
Hi, Kathy.
So I just happened to be reading the general bylaws one day and almost had a panic attack when I saw that it said that we only have four members for our capital planning when in fact the moderator appoints five. So I calmed down a little, and I looked at the charter, and the charter, of course, states that there are five appointed members of capital planning by the moderator. So basically, this is a little housekeeping for the annual town meeting to think about once the warrant is open. So the action is to just amend the general bylaw, Section 20730, Capital Planning Committee as follows. The part...the section that says, I think it's the second sentence, it says the moderator shall appoint five instead of four members for the three-year overlapping terms, and that's to be in coordination with the charter. And that's that.
Any questions for Kathy on that?
No.
Seems pretty straightforward, just a little conflict. One document's at four and one document's at five.
Exactly.
It's been five for centuries.
Forever in the charter.
And when we open the warrant later on, we can vote to put this on at a future meeting, I think.
All right.
Is that the way we should do it, Lorraine?
Yeah.
So if you can just put it on the agenda for actual voter on.
When we approve the law.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for catching that.
Thanks for catching it, Kathy.
Have a good night.
You know, one thing came to mind, Al, was while you were talking about reuse of the buildings over here, that I meant to say during your report. We're currently using the gym up at the old Gates School, but we have another Gates Gym over here. So there's a lot of basketball stuff going on now, and people from other towns coming here, and they go in and they try and find out how to get to Gates Middle School Gym, and a lot of people are going over there when they should be going over there. So at some point in time, we should probably try and rename that, and I think the gym is actually called maybe the Veterans Gym or something.
The...one of the things that we should try to see if we can locate is there used to be a plaque outside of the auditorium at the high school. So when you walked into the high school, there are two ways to get into the auditorium. It's kind of like, I think, the offices were there. It's all bricked. So the plaque was there, but the plaque originally was placed outside of the old Gates Gymnasium, and it was dedicated to the World War II veterans. And so that's probably should be, number one, located, replaced back there, and number two, probably putting the name, more of a name saying, you know, the vets.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Call it the Vet or call it something in memory of the World War II veterans.
It's over near the veteran cemetery as well, so...
That's...and I think people probably have forgotten that, and the best thing to do.
So it seems then that you should...the board would want to formally name that gymnasium something.
Yeah, and maybe the building as well, you know, maybe recreation or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, just so there's not confusion in terms of where you're going, and especially for out-of-town people.
How quick would something like that get changed on all this GPS stuff? Does it happen a week, a month, a year?
I'd have to ask Al Gore.
Yeah.
I think it takes a long time.
Okay.
Yeah, I think pretty... Fairly quickly, I would think.
Maybe a couple of weeks.
So we'll put it on a future agenda for you to consider renaming the...that set of buildings.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, maybe in the interim, just putting a sign over there that directs people back to over here if they do show up there and drive the doors.
Yeah.
And Lorraine, if you could maybe just contact the school department, see if what they did with the plaque.
Yeah, I'll start.
Yeah, if we can find that plaque and, you know, maybe at the next meeting, just at least formalize the name of the gym.
Yeah. It'll take really one winter cycle for people to figure that out. I mean...
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving right along. Discussion on the Waterways Commission dredging requests, Fran McMillan. Nancy, do you want to come up too?
Sure.
And Steve?
Hi.
Hi, Fran. How are you?
I'm doing great. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Yep. You've read your stuff, but if you can just give us an overview on...
Okay, the letter itself is pretty explanatory. We have gone over this many times. We know that we're in the process of Nancy's working, trying to get easements, and we're looking at where to put dredge spoils, and the concern we have at this point is it's now becoming very dangerous in the river. There are four to 500 boats that use the river on a regular basis. The buoys actually go underwater and out of sight on a really moving tide. The Coast Guard came down, and I believe Stephen worked with them, and they tried to rearrange the buoys to make that maybe resolve the issue, and that wouldn't work. So we're at the point now where we're getting concerned about the safety of the area and the future of it. And basically, we want to bring it to our attention, and hopefully we can move a little faster if that can be done, or move a little, you know, closer towards the goal of getting it dredged. Just want to bring it to our attention, that's all.
So just so maybe I can round out the issue a little bit. So there's an area at the mouth, if that's the right word, of the South River where you start heading down towards Hummerock.
Yes.
That is becoming dangerous because there's not enough way...waterway for boats to...
There's not enough actual water to run a boat there at low tide.
At low tide.
And the combination of the low water and the very, very quick currents, it becomes very dangerous.
Right.
And the channel itself is never really in the same place from week to week. It changes because of this situation.
So any idea on the cost of it? I mean, I would assume that would have to be funded through the Waterways Enterprise Fund.
We'd assume so. If we're not able to obtain grants or get money any other way, obviously, we're going to team up with Marshfields because they own the other side of the river. Four to $500,000, we figure, somewhere in that vicinity.
To do the whole...just that area or the whole...
To do the mouth of the river in that area.
Okay. I'll open it up to you guys. Any...
Makes sense.
Nancy, what's the status of...
Permitting, I believe, is...
Yeah, that...what's the status of the permitting and the...
Yes, so when I started the South River Dredge Project, I was told by Mike DeMayo that there is no good dredge project, and he's so true. The permits are and the funding have been tied into a beneficial reuse, which implies, not just implies, but requires us to get easements, to take the material from the river and put it in a location that's deemed most advantageous by the Department of Environmental Protection. I did the analysis for them. We cited North Situate. We cited, it's in Fourth Cliff, Hummerock, and then Mass Base as a final alternative. They wanted to keep it in the very same system with which the material came from, so they want to see it stay on Hummerock and Fourth Cliff. We have done our due diligence, I believe, in trying to attain easements. We have some engineering for the North Hummerock project, so it's a little bit tied into each other at this point. So with that, we're going to...we'd have to tie that easement into all of those projects because you wouldn't want to like have an easement that was just for the dredge and an easement that was just for the dune nourishment because at some point, those two projects will be very much the same. We will put that material in a way that would be engineered as a dune. We have had discussions with Fourth Cliff, the Air Force, and they have agreed to accept the material as a gift. We are in the process of doing that in case the homeowners decide they do not want to sign an easement. We're finding the alternative, and we also will probably ask them if North Situate, being that it is somewhat close to the same system, would be also an alternative for us as well. We have the permits for that. That's ready to go, and we own it. So those...all those items would fall into place. We had an environmental bond bill. It was done in 2014. The governor didn't sign it. The bond rating dropped during this process, and we're trying to remain in that bond bill. So we're going to have a meeting somewhat in January with the players on the environmental bond bill to try to keep that funding source alive for us while we continue to aim for getting those permits. With that, there is also mass DCR funding at one time and seaport funding. Those monies have dried up. We had a listening session back in the summertime with Jay Ash, who does the economic development for the state, and he clearly stated that if it doesn't have an economic benefit, then communities will not probably see dredge funding. And so there were many communities there, Stephen and myself represented Situate, but there was Nantucket, Moth's Vineyard, all of the Cape, Plymouth, Kingston, Fall River, New Bedford, Gloucester. And those cities, New Bedford, Fall River, Gloucester, all have an economic benefit and have been put to the top of the list. I know New Bedford already received their funds because I read in the paper yesterday.
What's the criteria for economic benefit?
So deep seaport or ability to bring in larger container ships, more to... Not recreational boating, more on the economic side, commercial boating and things of that... all of the fishing fleets, things of that nature.
Larger fishing fleets like New Bedford.
Sean?
Yeah, it's not so encouraging.
So...
So just a couple of questions. You kind of answered it, so the benefit for, you know, you couldn't convince them there would be a benefit to Central Ave, I mean, Fourth Cliff becoming an island at some point?
I've absolutely stated that.
Right.
And with the funding, the public funding piece that we keep tripping over requires a public benefit, and with that comes the easements because it's not a public beach. If it was a public beach, it would be...the material would just go directly there. Wouldn't even be a question, but because all of that whole area is owned privately, we still have to attain easements and provide a public access to that area.
Spit is privately owned?
No, the...
Central Ave, in front of Central Ave.
In front of its homes.
From Ten Cliff to 130, somewhere in that range. I'd even be...I'd even squeeze it and make a mountain because I know that the ocean will do its job for me. Another opportunity that we did have at one time was we were able to just dump it slightly offshore. That was an emergency situation. I guess we were using a hydraulic dredge. That didn't work. There were problems with it. They turned to mechanical dredge, and they allowed us to do it this one time, I believe. And so we may ask again if that might be an option for us to just dump it slightly offshore and still gain that benefit without having an easement, but I'm not certain that they will say yes when it was during an emergency. The other suggestion that was provided at that listening session with Jay Ash was that using...doing a regional type approach and asking other communities on the South Shore if they would be interested in purchasing a dredge, putting a little skin in the game. The state would probably put some skin in the game, and then we'd have, you know, a win-win situation where similar to Barnstable County that does dredge system, a dredge system. They have comprehensive plans. They continue to dredge over a scheduled period of time so that you just go in and you do your maintenance dredging. You already have your permits in place. You have the location for the material, and it kind of just keeps rolling along, you schedule through with the other communities so that you actually have that benefit. I know Plymouth County had tried it, but maybe there's an opportunity for us to have that, reopen that discussion.
I smile only because right away you said state having a dredge, which, great, and Barnstable County having a dredge. I think they actually do have an official dredge.
Yes, they do. They have two.
Plymouth County is basically a backhoe out the side of the...
Sorry. Yes.
You went to many meetings about the Plymouth County dredge initiative and...
That's not going to work in this situation yet. Mike, so it has to have a public...I'm sorry to interrupt here, gentlemen, and...
Go right ahead.
Public benefit and? It has to be a public benefit and an economic, or is it one or the other?
No, economic was just for the funding from the state. They said there were limited funds, and they had to create a criteria, and with that criteria became bumped up the economics since it was from the Economic Development Department of the branch of government.
One way of trying to, but the problem with Hummerock, or at least with Fourth Cliff, is we don't supposedly own the beach side.
Right. So we're in the process...we should have a preliminary permit meeting with all of the agencies within the next month on both projects, the North Hummerock and the South River Dredge Project. We'll have an opportunity to have some broader discussions with the permitting agencies, but we would still be required to have a permit even to do the...just the mouth of the river as far as the dredge goes. But as soon as those are in place and we have, if we're using Waterways funding, then that might be slightly different as to where we could put the location of the material.
We're just looking at that. That might be...I've been getting...they might end up having to use...
I'm sorry.
I was just curious whether or not even the...heading over to Third Cliff, you know, from the mouth going over, is there a need for beach re-nourishment in that location? You know, it's not that far.
I believe the...
Route to get to Fourth Cliff.
The material has to match, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Critical portion. The material has to match. What you're dumping has to match where you're dumping.
We have a grain size analysis.
So we've...and we've already done that as well. So we've been through the hydrographic survey, the dredge plans and the volumes, the topographic survey for both Hummerock and Fourth Cliff, the benefit official reuse analysis as well as the sediment sampling analysis plan, which was accepted, and then we've submitted that as well. We have now...two out of the 13 samples that came out of the river are going to require chemical analysis because it's too fine of a grain. It has to be a certain...over a certain percentage. So those will be tested, and then we have that preliminary environmental meeting with the agencies.
So I guess, do we have any matches with the material?
We do. It definitely matches Hummerock and Fourth Cliff.
Fourth Cliff, right.
But we could have...the other location that I was thinking towards, even though it's not close as such as a spit, we could look at North Situate because we do, again, have those permits. We have all the grain size, which we could definitely throw into the analysis mix and say, would this match?
Doesn't match.
The only difference would be unless you get funding outside, then it would go through Waterways, and that, I would assume, would be a very expensive cost to get it up to North Situate.
Right.
As opposed to keeping it more local.
Right.
Local type of vicinity.
But the town's...isn't the town going to be buying sand to put onto North Situate?
True. So that could be another...I don't know.
That was my question. Is it going to go on the beach or offshore if it were to go to mine it?
So, yeah...
Like with Cohasset, they pumped it right on the beach, and that's what we're trying to do for mining, right?
Right, so that would have to be investigated.
But you just said something that sounded very good. It was too fine. I mean, that's like...that's just exactly what you want on the beach, especially mine at a Hummerock.
Right, that's just for the sampling analysis, so it was too fine for the purposes...so they have a range with which it would need a chemical analysis, and some chemicals will get trapped in certain types of material more quickly. So I think that is that 10% grain size, you know, under that 10% grain size. So they wanted just to have those chemically tested so that we know that whatever we have there isn't going to be...we're not putting chemicals onto a natural clean beach. That's the purpose of having those tested. If we didn't even have...if we didn't have those two samples that had the fines, we would...we would be going forward.
Could we do something like Cohasset did and pipe it right around to the...we wouldn't have to...
That was attempted farther down on the South River, and they had...
Was that when AGM did it years ago?
No, this is just about three years ago.
The Barnstable County dredge actually came in. It was about a year...
Two years ago. They came in and they had a lot of problems because of the cobble damage in their equipment.
Right, that's...
So I don't think they're going to be racing back up here.
Pumped sand.
What's that?
Cohasset pumped sand from...
I know that.
Yeah, they did it pretty bad.
That's very pristine.
Yeah.
Right.
Then they took the rest of the materials and it went to Mass Base.
All right. Steve, whose dredge is that? And I've seen it at the power plant on the canal. Is that the state or the federal government? I was taking pictures because I thought it was a Seine boat, and it was a dredge boat, and they regularly do the canal.
It could be the Army Corps then.
All right. And then they go out and grab...
Because the Army Corps owns the canal.
Okay, so we couldn't borrow that for a couple of days.
Yeah.
That was small shit. That was...
I mean, this has been...the permitting started on the South River before I even...I've been here...I just started my third year, and I think you started...
Yeah, I inherited when we lost the harbor master, and there was a grant, and then there was nobody to take over the project, so I just kind of took it up.
Karen?
If, assuming financing aside, timing-wise, if the permits get in place, is there a window where you can or cannot be doing the dredging?
Absolutely. There's a timing restriction, mostly through the spring, summer.
Yeah. And the other question is, have you had...you mentioned Marshfield. Has...have there been preliminary conversations about a potential cost share?
We've been working with Marshfield all along through this process. There was work done Sea Street South that was done...
That was a year and a half ago with...
With the hydrological...
County dredge.
Okay.
And that was a cost share.
Okay.
Audience, any...yes, name and address, please.
Abbey Cootsburg, 143 Edward Foster Road. Just want to go back to the beginning of this discussion where the real thrust here was let's talk about safety of individuals using the Waterways. And we talked a little bit about going and talking to Jay Ash and the economic benefit, and money might not be there. Might we want to consider going back to our state rep Cantwell and suggesting that they take another point of view on this, that we have a safety concern here above the economic benefit and see that we might be able to get some leverage that way.
Good idea. I'm sure...I'm sure you've spoken to Jim.
Yeah.
This has been going on for a while. It sounds like you guys are really on top of it.
Yeah, he's...we've been in recent contact with him as well, and that's how we're going to roll over and keep that environmental bond bill alive, so that funding source will be available once we have the permits in hand.
Any other questions from the audience?
Just an observation. You mentioned about the easements. I think it might bear fruit if we were to, at some point, contact Bob Galvin, who's an attorney who dealt with the town of Marshfield with respect to the ownership of the beachside of Wrexham. I know it went up to court, and when I spoke to Bob at some point back a number of months, it went up to court, and when I spoke to Bob at some point back a number of months, Bob seemed to think that, you know, the whole entire isthmus, if you will, of Hummerock from Fourth Cliff down, at some point was under the same kind of ownership. And by virtue of that, there's a distinction between people owning to the low water. The case that Bob handled with Marshfield indicated that, no, they didn't. And so he was saying, well, you never know, because right across going up, you got Hummerock. It might bear fruit to explore that, to see, because if that's the case, then we're searching for all these easements to do something, given the magnitude of the proposed projects going forward. If that were the case, then we would not have to expend a lot of time to do it if it's the town-owned beachside. So I mention that because I've forgotten to mention it in the past, but I think it's something worth considering now that we're doing an awful lot of infrastructure, road repair, and on that side, because it's going to be necessary.
That's right.
Just keep that in mind for the board.
Right. Well, from a practical sense, it seems like maybe, is there a stabilization fund for, capital stabilization fund for enterprise funds?
There are, but not for Waterways. But there is already appropriation, there are several appropriations for South River dredging that are already in place.
Okay. So, to the amount of, about?
Sure, I brought it with me. We have 136,000 for South River dredging already in our coffers, another one for 30,000, and then we have a $200,000 authorization for harbor or river dredging, harbor authorization.
Oh, we're short about 70 grand.
That's if we pay the whole thing. Marshfield's got to pay half.
Well, that's good.
Well, it seems like we're, I know you're bringing it for us tonight, but it seems like we're kind of pretty far along the process here, so, you know, keep up the good work and keep... Nancy, we're doing a super job with, you know, the interesting things that we don't all understand, but we're just looking at it from a safety issue, from the point that the boaters on the waterways have come to us. Well, I hope, I think Howie brings up a good point, what you just mentioned. You know, I think somehow the Waterways Committee has got to figure out a way to identify that so that it isn't as big of a safety issue, you know, when people start voting again, so.
We could also bring it to Jay Ash's attention as well. I mean, we can just make that effort and put it forth. And though the piece, what I call Section B, is what needs to be dredged sooner rather than later, might be 40,000 just to do the dredge, then there's other costs involved as well. So we are looking more at, doing the whole stretch was about two miles, and that's anywhere from 3 to 5 million. So there's like a little bit of discrepancy on the cost, but we'll definitely bring it to Jay Ash's attention that, and maybe I'll just forward the letter from Waterways.
Great. Well, thanks for bringing it before us, and you know, please update us in a month or so, when, after the holidays, when you get some sort of...
Absolutely.
...forward bargains.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, sorry.
Moving right along, we have a donation to Situate Town Library.
Let us hear it, do it.
Well, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Cantfield, I think.
You think I know something about that?
I think it's appropriate.
So, last year, we lost a young man in Situate, Michael Goulding, and a lot of people wanted to honor him, and contributed funds to the family to do something. And his, his passions were reading and nature, and so the family has approached the library and requested that they donate, basically make sort of a reflection garden behind the library with trees, and his brother's going to build a bench down the road, and it's moving forward. But the first step is that Northern Oaks Landscaping, who's close with the family, would like to donate a 15-foot tulip tree, and the library is working with the architect, the landscape architect, to find the right place for that, because it's a pretty substantial tree, and they will donate the installation cost for that. So they're asking us to accept that donation in his honor.
Any further questions?
No, very nice.
Yeah.
Great, sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, it will be.
Want to read the motion?
I would love to read the motion. I move that the Board of Selectment accept donation in memory of Michael J. Goulding to the town, Situate Town Library.
Second?
Second by Mr. Danny. Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero. Thank you very much to Mr. Leach and the Goulding family. Moving on to the next item, we're going to talk about the fiscal year '19 budget meeting schedule. Ms. Holt?
Good evening, everyone.
Finance Director and Town Account.
What you have in your packet is the proposed budget and capital review schedule for fiscal '19, believe it or not, budget. It starts back in October of this year with preparation, and will run all the way through special town meeting, annual town meeting, and probably a special town meeting within it, on April 9th, 2018. All the different required charter and bylaw dates are specified so everyone knows when things need to get done, and then we have a schedule for when all of the departments would appear before the different committees for review. Lorraine, Michelle, and I have been working on this to make sure that we're all in agreement, and it's gone out to the departments to make sure that there aren't any issues, and we've made adjustments from there, and now it's for the board to review.
Great. Thank you for drawing up. It's, what we're looking at is basically a calendar that started a few months ago, and next to it is the article in the bylaw, or whatever kind of dictates what has to be done and what timeframe. I'm not going to run through all the dates, but it starts with when the budgets need to be completed, when things need to be posted, when town meeting's going to be, which will be on April 9th, 2018, for those of you marking your calendars, and capital planning and advisory committee. So great, great work on the document. Good to have it formalized, so we have something to matter ourselves against. Any questions or comments?
No, that's good.
I just had one question. Oh, sorry, Sean. The Financial Forecast Committee, is that out of sequence, or is it supposed to be, have they met?
We did meet November 7th.
It was, okay, it's just out of sequence on this calendar. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's not necessarily chronological.
No, certainly not.
But we did meet, and we're meeting again in...
Oh, I see, okay.
It seems likely that we don't have any updates right now.
Right.
Great.
So we have the preliminary numbers that went out to the town and the schools, so that they have an idea of where to aim their budgets at, and then once we hear from the state in terms of how funding and stuff, we will make some adjustments.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great. If there's no questions, any questions from the audience? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Move to approve the fiscal '19 budget meeting schedule.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, thank you. Okay, we have a new item on the agenda for tonight. It's a discussion vote from the Situate Police Department, the Axon Contract, which will be up to $98,269.20. Chief Stewart and Mark Thompson, Deputy Chief.
Thank you. The...
I think we have a copy of the contract.
Yeah.
Just a historical perspective on this, we started putting some stats together as far back as three years ago on, you know, in trying to come up with funding towards, moving towards a less lethal option, as we call it, and use tasers. Right now, the officers have two less lethal options. One is a baton, and the other one is the pepper spray. By today's standards and policies, the use of the baton is not something we want to see deployed towards people. The pepper spray has become pretty ineffective. It affects the police officers as much, if not more, than the person that you're applying it against. But even in more serious instances where, you know, you have but one option right now is your sidearm, we need a legitimate second alternative. And tasers across the Commonwealth and across the country, since we started looking at them back in '09, the use and deployment of them has increased right now. We're one of a couple of towns in Plymouth County that don't have them. And we're getting to the point, and our fear is that if we don't come up with a legitimate source of less lethal, a less lethal option, that at some point a judge or jury could be asking us why we didn't have such an option. We have, over the last few years, researched funding opportunities through the capital plan, and there's other more, you know, significant items on that capital plan, and this kept getting bumped off. Right now, we have an alternative funding arrangement where the company offers a five-year payment plan. So what we want to do is we want to use Law Enforcement Trust Fund, which is our drug proceeds, and this is a legitimate use of those proceeds, and we will do the first initial outlay. And from there, the contract calls for, was it 19,0440, for the next four years after that. Deputy Chief Thompson has worked with TASER, this was in putting this contract together. The contract was time-sensitive, and we realized that we hadn't been put on the agenda for tonight. We want to thank Lorraine for making that happen. Or we were going to have to, the deputy was going to have to go back and revisit this, and the expense would have been increased, there's no doubt, so.
Great, so just to summarize, there's 45 tasers.
Yes.
It's, the total cost is $98,000, of which we're going to spread out over five years.
Yes.
And you're going to fund it through the pension fund, or the drug?
The initial first payment will be through the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Okay.
The next four payments will be part of our budget.
Part of your budget, great.
Yes.
And you said there were only a couple of other towns in the state, really, that don't have...
In Plymouth County, but even in the state, they've, from '09 to 2015, there was a 378% increase in towns carryin'. The stats that we have are from back in 2015, when it was, we last collected them in an effort to get this accomplished.
And does the price include training and maintenance, or is that...
The initial training consists of six hours each officer, I believe, and then four hours every year from there on. We plan on including that within our budget, year-in and year-out budget. We plan on doing it during some of our other in-service in-house training.
Sean?
Mike, when you and I spoke about this a little while ago, I thought what was helpful to me is how you'd administer it. You know, I didn't really think of it at the time, but you said to me, oh, don't think that the guys are just going to use it, you know, too quick.
Yeah, there's going to be...
Someone uses it, you know, they're going to have to answer to you, and so...
Absolutely. There's going to be a policy on the deployment and use of it. And while when faced with a lethal threat, somebody else with a gun, the TASER's not going to be your first item that you grab. You're going to have to meet lethal force with lethal force. Now, that being said, in Duxbury, a year and a half ago, they had two people shot with a shotgun one night in a bizarre incident of a ride-by shooting, and the officer stopped the car, and the person got out of the car, and he took him down with a TASER. And you're very lucky that he didn't get out with a shotgun, because the officer had the TASER in his hand. So there's a significant amount of training that has to be done. You don't want to bring a TASER to a gunfight. It's not going to work. So, you know, the officers, there will be a strict policy. It'd be an accredited policy, and it'll fit within future accreditation plans. And, you know, I think it's something that the officers have been looking forward to, having this option for a while, and, you know, without coming up with a good funding source like is available to us now, which is wasn't doable for the last few years.
So, how long do these last? I mean, if you're spreading the cost out of the initial payment for five years, and the battery as well, I mean, what's the normal, I mean, they're only warranted for a year, so.
So, under the TASER 60 program?
Yep.
Everything's included within that program for the five years. So, any battery issues, any issues with the device itself, training cartridges, if we do a deployment of the cartridges, all of those are covered under the program, so there's no additional cost for those.
Okay.
The devices themselves, they would have a longer shelf life than five years, but it's a type of thing that at the end of five years, you're going to reevaluate where you're at.
Technology.
And then potentially look at what the next step is. So, you know, it's something more likely that we'll be looking at as a continuing cost going forward, as the technology evolves, and we look at what the useful life of them are.
And just to clarify, the training, you said, the initial six year, six-hour training, is that included in this contract, or is that additional cost?
That, there's no cost to TASER itself for that training.
Yeah.
Besides the fact that the training cartridges are included. So, our armor Sergeant Bowman is going to a TASER class, that he'll become an instructor, so we'll handle all the training in-house.
Okay.
He can handle that.
And so the subsequent annual update will be the same?
All in-house, yes.
Great, great.
Sean, any questions? Quick question. So is it actually a lease, or is it a purchase?
It's a purchase, so at the end of them, you own them. There's no interest charge on this. If you take the yearly expense, it comes out to the same thing. This is just a funding mechanism that they've realized helps departments so that they don't have to get the huge initial outlay. There is a non-appropriation clause within the contract, and Nancy has reviewed all of this as well, so if any of the out here is coming along, for whatever reason, it can't be accommodated through the budget, if you don't have a funding source, we're not stuck in the contract, because obviously we wouldn't be able to enter in the contract if that was the case.
Okay. Great, well, I think it's a great idea. I think it's, you have to have at least a less lethal option when you're dealing with this. Just watch the news, and you see it every day. So, and obviously, there's not a lot of shootings in the town, and...
That's right. We want to keep it that way.
I don't expect there'll be a ton of tasering either, but it's good to know that the police officers will be safe in situations where they don't have to, you know, draw their firearms, so.
I think just one last then to Sean's point as well. These devices are all electronic, they're basically computerized. So information from them is downloaded and a report has to be done. So you'll be able to see exactly how many times my TASER is deployed, how many times a drive's done, has done, exactly all the data off of it. So to the chief's point, you're 100% responsible for everything that happens. So there's, there's a lot of documentation behind these devices.
Good point. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Move the Board of Selectment vote to award a contract for the procurement of TASER Electronic Control Weapons, contract number 18-PO-10, to Axon Corporation of Wilburn, Mass, in the amount of $98,269.20, as specified in the quotation dated November 27th, 2017.
Second by Ms. Cantfield. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero.
Can I just make a quick point that I noticed here? In the motion, it says Axon Corporation of Wilburn, Mass. It's Axon Corporation of Scottsdale, Arizona, if you see that in the connects line above it, so.
Oh.
Just from a technicality standpoint.
Want to correct that?
I just moved to modify my former motion to include the, to strike Wilburn, Mass, and to include it as being Scottsdale, Arizona.
Second?
Second by Ms. Cantfield. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, I'd like to thank Lorraine for making this possible. We were in a bind yesterday, and she made it happen today for us. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
[laughing]
It's now being 7:50. The next item on the agenda is review and discuss, and possibly vote the continuance of the public hearing for Hummerock Seafood DBA Nautical Two. Stephen Lehman Applicant and John Aita.
Aita.
His attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So last we were here, it was about a month ago, it was on November 7th. At that time, the board had kind of asked for an update. Obviously, we had an anticipated planning board hearing on November 21st. We did attend that hearing. And just, not to bore you with details, but just briefly, it was for a request for a site plan waiver. Essentially, it's two issues that we presented to the planning board at that time, which we felt was appropriate in light of not only the application in the materials we submitted, but the letter of support from Robert Vogel, who's the building commissioner. He felt it was appropriate for the site plan waiver, based on the new use of a restaurant and the proposed work on the site as being minor or insignificant in nature. The other request we had in addition to the site plan waiver was a parking waiver. The new use requires four spots on a minimum, and if you were to take none of the existing parking spaces on-site into account, the applicant is able to, or has the ability to access the on-street parking, which would be four spots. We felt that was an appropriate request for a waiver of four spots if needed. Essentially, after our presentation, the application was summarily dismissed, essentially, and as were the supporting materials. The board voted to deny that request, and essentially the effect of which is that the applicant, Mr. Lehman, is to further pursue the original application, which was the major, excuse me, request for major site plan administrative review. There was no available hearing dates in December. The first available for the planning board is January 11th, and I understand that this board wanted, was hesitant to do anything last time, and obviously probably the same way tonight, felt that it needs to go through the process. Unfortunately, the process is still ongoing. I feel that, you know, Mr. Lehman is doing everything he can in his power. There's some, you know, factors, obviously, we were a little surprised... you know, factors, obviously, we were a little surprised that the, um, application in front of the planning board was denied, unfortunately, there's no appeal process, the essential, the appeal process is to go through, uh, the full site plan, um, request. So, what I'm asking you this evening, um, if the board, again, I felt this last time that the board has enough materials to go ahead and make a decision, but if the board is inclined, either they feel that there's not enough information, or they still are uncertain, because they don't want to make a decision short of the planning board decision, um, and if you're inclined not to act favorably, I, I essentially just ask if they, if you would entertain an additional request to continue, um, until after the planning board is heard. I, I know the board's had some reservations about that, and to this is how I would respond, I would say, um, I'm not aware of any other applications for that license, I could be wrong, but I don't think there are any, Lorraine, if you know.
None.
And I think it would be an unnecessary exercise to cause Mr. Lehman to have to withdraw, resubmit, which would, you know, precipitate the need to notify the abutters, have a new application, potentially have new witnesses to come in, both in favor and against, and start the process all over again. I don't think the board is necessarily prejudiced or harmed by continuance till after that process, um, and therefore, you know, I'd be prepared to ask for that, uh, request here tonight, um, 'cause I understand that it's pretty much the board's intention to really not make a decision, or at least not act favorably, until they hear from the planning board.
Before we go, uh, with us, Ann Burbine, on the planning board, do you have anything to add to that, or?
Um, yes, I do.
Just give your address, just.
Ann Burbine, Tenpin Cris Road, I chaired that meeting. And I have to say that, yes, we did receive a letter from Bob Vogel. He stipulated more than once that it was in the purview of the planning board to decide whether or not to waive the application. And we chose not to waive it, because there are parking issues, there are building issues, there are health issues, there are fire issues, to name a few. So they're coming back on the eleventh to try and figure out what they're going to do. It is a steel building, it's all brought in underneath, yes, they may have four spaces for sixteen seats, but our concern, it's, and a deck, which is included in, in all of this, bolts everywhere, it's just, you know, we really have some serious concerns about the, the application, none of it today has been cleared up, cleaned up, and, you know, we have, we have issues, we have real issues.
Great, board?
That just made me think of something, I don't know if it's within our, you know, purview, but are you leasing the space now, Steve?
Yes, I've been paying on it for a while, and I, I installed the septic system and everything for that, and there were some issues brought up at the meeting in regards to the fire department, I spoke to the fire department that, yeah, the morning when I got the email, and they were unaware of the property lines, 'cause Karen had reached out to Al, questioning the congestion of the boats, that, which are not on our property, has nothing to do with us, but that was, that was one of the reasons, um, and then the other was a board of health issue as far as septic, uh, that Karen reached out to board of health on a minimum through D E P, which is a thousand gallons, but that's, that is actually for the whole building, um, not just for our section.
Well, you will call that out.
Yeah, I spoke with the engineer, they'll, he'll, he'll address all that.
The reason I was asking that is to Ann's point, if, you know, if you were there, and if you're, you know, if you're doing business, you know, wholesale law, anything, you could be making these improvements.
Well, actually, he, he did attempt, I'm sure Mr. Lehman will address this, but. I was told by Laura Hardball at the time, which Ann presented the other night, that she's no longer here, but when we started, we, we had pulled the building permit, we put some new siding on one side of the building, and then when Ann, um, I'm sorry, when Laura said to me, you have to come from the planning board, she said, you need to stop, you cannot do any more work, which we haven't done, until the time that you go through planning board. So, nothing has been done, for the mere fact that we were told by Laura, that we can't do it until we get planning board approval, and she stated the sections of the bylaw. So that's why everything has stopped, I already sheathed one side of the building with my building permit, and we put the windows in, so the left side of the building has new sheeting on it, but nothing else has been done there, because we were told we couldn't.
Makes sense.
So, you know, and now they're coming back saying, well, nothing's been done, and when I mentioned that the other night, Ann says, well, Laura's no longer here, well, does that mean I can go ahead and continue my work? Or do I have to wait for planning board approval?
I suspect you probably see what you're gonna have to do, is if you're doing just the exterior, that if you're, you're, you're trying to build it in conformance with your new uses, then it's, I would say you can't.
The inside's done.
If you're doing the exterior, I can't imagine why you couldn't continue to do the exterior, um, but, again, that's just my own take on it. But, that being said, um, did you, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, uh, did we get a copy of the lease?
It was emailed over, yeah.
Fair enough, I haven't seen it, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I knew it was coming up, so I was, made sure you had.
You were, because that was the third, this will be the third.
I haven't seen it.
I have no issues with postponing this, or not postponing it, but, um, continuing it. If they're meeting on January eleventh, um, I would, I would consider moving it to late January or February, I would probably even say twenty-third, or the next one in February, 'cause it's budget season, so I, I would have no issues with that. I will say, though, if it turns out that in the interim, somebody comes forward and saying they're looking for it, um, obviously, then it's gonna get to a point where we need to make a decision on this issue.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I don't think that's gonna be the problem, we haven't heard of anything, so far we have a couple available, so.
Karen?
No, I agree, as long as there's not a pressure on it, then I think continuing till after the planning board has made their determination's fine.
So tonight, we, we can either, one, grant the license, two, revoke, or.
Deny.
Deny, deny the license and start, have them start the process over again, or the other one, just continue the process until after the planning board, um, comes to their, um, next meeting and see what, see where it goes from there. So, um, and I, uh, with the rest of the board, I don't have any problem, um, continuing it as well, like Lorraine said, there's a couple other licenses there, no one's come before us, I will tell you, if somebody was, and that was the only license before, and then we'd consider it, I would say that this probably won't drag on for months and months more, I think it's coming to its conclusion at some point in time. So, um, I don't think anything's gonna happen over the, over the holiday season anyways. Can I have a motion? Any discussion from the audience? The audiencee?
Will the Board of Selectmen approve the continuance of a public hearing for a new all-alcohol license application for Hummerock Seafood, limited liability company doing businesses in Article Two, until January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, uh, which is gonna be the Board of Selectmen's meeting?
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Is there, just a quick question, has there been any design change to the interior of the, is it still the two-table restaurant with the bar?
Yeah, there hasn't been any changes since the last application.
Okay.
But now that, you know, we've been informed that we can go back to cleaning up the outside, we can do that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I still have, I still have a little bit of a concern of it being a restaurant with only two tables there.
So I guess to that point, the, technically, the site, administrative site plan review is based on the twenty-eight seats, 'cause again, this was kinda two balls in the air, so what will likely happen is, um, we may have an amendment to go back to the original plan, um, but.
Just, I'm gonna ask that again whenever.
Right, absolutely, and we'll make sure that whatever's presented at the time is accurate in terms of what we're, we're looking for, so, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Moving right along, um, discussion for the two thousand and eighteen Board of Selectmen meeting dates, Lorraine Devon. So, this is basically the calendar you sent us with the meeting dates, which.
Yes, we've updated, um, I've updated the dates since our last discussion, I also included a copy of the school calendar for you.
Great, and I see you removed the two.
We moved the two meetings in eight, uh, February and April, so they didn't go for those certification moves.
Right.
I sent a copy to Jim Pedrow, just to get his input on it, and we had no changes that, if you want it. So you don't have to vote or anything, just let me know if you're okay with it, and I will publish it.
The only thing is, so is April twenty-four, or April?
April seventeen is the.
Okay, that's right, I, that's good, I'm good, I looked at it, you're right.
And then town meetings on a Monday.
Yep.
So that is the ninth, that's why the Monday meetings.
Yeah, you can vote that tonight, too, but.
Right.
If it moves forward, we'll publish it.
So, I don't, there's, there's a lot of meetings, I don't recall meeting this often, and maybe I'm.
For the past four years that I've been here, this has been pretty much your meeting schedule.
So we're meeting every day, every week in March?
Yes.
I guess that's.
That's the only month, really.
Yeah, you know what, you're right, you're right.
And we just have the town meeting, so whenever that typically is, April ninth, if you vote that tonight.
You're right, that's fine, I think because we changed the February one, it just, I think we probably had the first week in March off before, so.
Yes.
Great, any comments for her?
Nope.
Great.
Thank you, Lorraine.
And this is in line with the, um, the budget calendar that Nancy gave you.
Right.
We do, I did look at meetings, and I did look at, you know, January ninth seemed pretty light, so I made that a seven o'clock. The others are pretty heavy meetings, you know, with a lot of departments coming in. After the first couple, if you wanna change the time, we can all change the time.
Yeah, we can adjust that, more can.
Yeah.
Deal with those.
You're the one that has a six o'clock commitment, right? Oh, difficult time making it, I think, I can't speak for Mara, but I thought you were the one that.
I have in the past, so we'll.
I'll think, yeah.
Great, moving on. Discussion vote at eight-ten for, which I am right on time.
Actually, you're ahead of time.
I'm ahead of time. Hopefully Ms. Kern is paying attention to that.
I was gonna say, she watches us, and keeps, keeps to the.
A discussion vote to set the annual town meeting and the town election dates.
Move to set the annual town meeting date for Monday, April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, and the town election date for Saturday, May nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, further discussion? So, they're both set by the charter, right, Nancy? So we had some discussions about moving this around a little bit, was it true there were no flexible dates that we could go to?
No.
Right, um, and the problem is that in May, that's a busy weekend, and there's a lot going on for the election, but, um, but you researched and found that there was no.
We asked town council for an opinion, based on what the, the board's feedback at the last meeting, and town council came back and said no.
And could you explain that, basically, 'cause it has to be six weeks after?
Uh, yeah, she said, based on the way that our charter was worded, we could not move the date from that, so we get, we asked her if we could move it back or move it forward, and she said no.
Okay, so that may be something that we wanna look at for the.
Charter review.
For the charter, or for the annual town meeting, oh, no, we can't, it has to be a charter review, right?
I think we, I think we can do, like, modifications to the charter.
Right.
Didn't we do it with.
We did it before.
One time with a date, we moved it from March to April, and there's something with the charter that we did.
Yeah.
It's not like a whole charter review, it's like a specific, it's, or is it?
I think it was moved, but.
Special legislation?
I.
What's that?
You get special legislation for one of them, and it was gonna hit.
You took one.
No, but years before that, we used to have the earliest town meeting in.
Right.
In the, in the county, and we moved it later. Lorraine, maybe you can look into that and see what we need to do, if we can just look at the inflexibility of that, and see if they're, if we can change it to have more flexibility in the future?
Question.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that?
Karen.
Karen.
Okay.
And it was unanimous. Moving on to new business, can I, discussion vote on a one-day liquor license?
And the times changed, so you have a new copy in front of you?
Yep. All right, this is, um, one-day wine and malt license, they've been submitted by Taylor Made bartenders for an open house at Native located at fifty-one Front Street, um, and it looks like the date they're looking for is December ninth, from two to six P M, and so I move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license for an open house located at Native, fifty-one Front Street, Situate, Mass, um, for Taylor Made bartenders on Saturday, December ninth, two thousand and seventeen, from two P M until six P M.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
You can't look too fast here, Tony, maybe we need to take a break to catch up to.
We'll get to eat dinner then.
To the Morris.
Okay, now, moving right along to, uh, two thousand and eighteen Town of Situate Annual License Renewals.
Yeah.
So we have, take a second, do we have it on paper, or is it just on?
I did, I printed it out for all of you, so my.
Oh, it's right here. It's right here. Thank you, Lorraine.
So, this is for all the, um.
This is for most of them, it's not all of them, we still have some inspections going on, we still have some taxes that we paid that we're chasing people for, things like that, but this is the majority, and then on December, uh, the next meeting in December, we'll do the rest.
So the license runs for the calendar year, and these are the renewals for next year for various C V's and, and liquor license entertainment licenses, so if somebody wants to just start going through some of them, and when you need a breath, we'll go to somebody else.
Move, Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following restaurant, all alcohol licenses for two thousand and eighteen, Abaka Tavern, Reva Restaurant, Satua Tavern, The River Club, The Millworf, Hook and Harvest, The Galley, TK O'Malley's, Rivershed, The Voyage, and Jamie's Pub.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if we can just have, if you, if you want to pull one aside, just say, hold, and I also wanna reiterate that all of these establishments have no tax deals that are passed due, and they've had no violations to.
Correct, and they've all been inspected by board of health, police, fire, all the necessary inspections in building, we're about it. And I don't know if you wanted to just mention the Jamie's Pub, uh, 'cause we just approved it, um, although they, because they're planning to rebuild, and they wanna keep their liquor license, and we did check with the A B C C.
Is that later, or is that?
No, we just did.
We just approved it.
No, 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 but we have that documentation in the packet.
Well, that's just for your information.
Okay, sure, so we got, we, um, Jamie's Pub filed with the A B C C to get a, um, waiver in terms of liens on, uh, the assets of the company for, um, for, for deadening in terms of.
Liquor purchases, I think.
Yeah, liquor purchases, so that they can, uh, pursue rebuilding the restaurant and what have you, so that's why we passed this, 'cause that's their intention moving forward in the upcoming year, so. Great, can I keep going?
Sure. Will the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following restaurant wine and malt license for two thousand and eighteen, Cosmo's Cafe?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kern, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Canfield, actually.
What did I say?
Kern.
I just wanna clarify the records.
Thank you for correcting the records, sorry.
I, I vote for that.
I'm going too quick. I'm going too quick.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following retail package store, all alcohol licenses for 2018? Harborside Wines and Spirits, Reynolds Package Store, Situate Package Store, Still Waters, Wine and Gourmet Limited Liability Company.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cantwell. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following retail package store, wine and malt licenses for 2018? 7-Eleven, O'Callaghan's Package Store, LLC, The Village Market, Sand Hills General Store.
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield, further discussion? Any discussion on any of these?
Well, nobody's in violation right now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Move the board of selectmen vote to renew the following club, all alcohol licenses for 2018? Situate Country Club, Situate Harbor Yacht Club.
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following club, wine, and malt licenses for 2018? That would be the Situate Racket and Fitness.
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield. Campfield.
You have a problem with that?
Let me write it down.
I have my mind, I was just wondering. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew...
Did you second something?
The following common VIC licenses for 2018? Cercio's Grotto, Coffee Corner, CP's Wood-Fired Pizza, Dad's Place, Dribbles, Driftway, Dunkin' Donuts, Egypt Country Store, Harbor Donuts, Tennessee News, Harbor House, Front Street Gourmet, Hook and Harvest, Jamie's Pub, Sam's on the Harbor, Maria's, Morning Glory's Bakery, O'Callaghan's Retail Package Store LLC, O'Callaghan's DBA, The Voyage, Quince Juicery, Ronnie Joan General Store, Situate China Gourmet, Sand Hills General Store, The Baki Tavern, Reva Restaurant, Situate Tavern, Cosmo's Cafe, The River Club, The Millworf, The Village Market, Reynolds Package Store, Situate Racket and Fitness, Situate Country Club, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, 7-Eleven, Galley, TK O'Malley's, Wilbers North, Rivershed.
Second.
You're not hungry now?
Second by Mr. Danighy. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
How lucky are we.
It's four to zero.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following entertainment licenses for 2018? The Baki Tavern, Reva Restaurant, Hook and Harvest, The River Club, Situate Country Club, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, TK O'Malley's, The Millworf, Galley, Rivershed, The Voyage, and Jamie's Pub.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danighy, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero.
I'll let someone else do the next one.
Will the board of selectmen vote to review, renew the following Class II licenses for 2018? Seacrest Auto, Driftway Auto, Inc., McBrians Diagnostic Repair, and Situate Shell, Inc.
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
It's three, zero with one abstention.
Will the board of selectmen vote to renew the following Class III licenses for 2018? Ray's Repair Shop.
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, four to zero.
Finally, I move that the board of selectmen vote to renew the following septic disposal licenses for 2018? Alltown, Inc., Rosano Davis, PF Spencer, Sporito Environmental Services, Ronaby, Inc., DBA, K.R. Anderson Pumping Co.
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's four to zero. So, that's the majority of them, and we'll do the rest at the next meeting.
Yeah, and if I could just take a quick second to say, this is the tremendous amount of work that goes into the annual licensing rules, and inspections of all of the properties. So, Sergeant Jerry O'Brien handles the police, Neil Duggan this year, and Bob handled the building, Al Elliott handles the fire inspections, Jen and Jane in the board of health office, Auntie Pecopiano does a ton of work on this scenario, Michelle and Diane, our senior task person, as well as myself. So, it's a lot of people's efforts, and the business owners, who have a lot of paperwork to do and get in, all the departments, and we appreciate their cooperation.
Great.
Because we really bug the heck out of them.
Well, the board would like to thank all of them, and thank you as well, because you put a lot of time and energy in this as well, so, thank you, Lorraine. Discussion, the next item is a discussion and vote for the open annual town meeting and the special town meeting warrant. So, basically, what we do is, we open the warrant.
Move the board of selectmen open the annual and special town meeting warrant for the April 9th, 2018, annual and special town meeting at 8:19 p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, four to zero. Let the games begin. Okay, now, moving on to correspondence, I think there was one...
Letter from a Jay McGovern, Holly Erav, to the chairwoman, Ms. Curran. I wanted to share a positive experience I recently had at the Situate Senior Center. My elder, elderly mother is with me for an extended visit. I noticed that the senior center offers mahjong every Tuesday, morning, did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Mahjong, yeah.
Mahjong. As my mother is an experienced mahjong player, I called ahead to see if it was okay for her to join in, even though she is not a Situate resident, the reception could not have been more friendly or unwelcoming. I drove her to the Brook Street Building, and everyone, from the receptionist to the other seniors, to the woman leading the group, were all kind and made my mother feel at home. In addition, Gene Sullivan took the time to visit with me and explain how we can arrange to have the van pick up my mother at my house when I'm working. My mother had a wonderful time with her new friends, and I was so pleased by the inclusive environment. Hats off to our council on aging, they are doing a wonderful job supporting our seniors, even the seniors that don't live in Situate. Thank you, and that was from Jay McGovern.
That's so nice.
Great news. I think we knew that happened anyways, but thank you, Linda, and the staff over there for making everyone feel welcome.
I have to say, I stopped by there this morning, or today, about 12:30, and they had just wrapped up from five different programs that had gone on this morning. They were, they were gearing up for the afternoon programming, so, they work hard down there.
Great. Now, we have approval of some minutes.
I move to accept the meeting minutes for the board of selectmen meeting held on November 21st, 2017.
Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Any other business from anybody?
No, I have none. Well done on this meeting.
All right, I have a couple of quick things. First of all, many of you may have noticed, driving down First Parish, or if you go to the school, there's a new flagpole out by the field back there, and I want to thank, it's Tony, is your pronouncer Messini?
No. Machine.
Machiney, I'm sorry, Machiney. I want to thank, I think he went to Situate High School and graduated from there, he's a veteran as well, and he donated that, it is gorgeous, the flag looks beautiful and crisp, it's way above the tree line, so you can see it from quite always away, and it's just a perfect spot for it. So, thank you very much for donating that, it's gonna get decades and decades of use. Also, just want to congratulate the football team, they had a great, I don't think we've met since Thanksgiving, so we had, they had their game at Fenway Park, we didn't have a Thursday morning game, we had a Wednesday night game, and it was a great turnout from the town. John was there, as well as many others, and a great game, the refs took the game away from us, but we don't go into that too much. But, great, just Situate falling, anytime there's a big event, the community goes out, and they support it on a cold night, and watching the kids play, and really, you know, it's a great community, and it definitely shows on those events, and congratulations to a great year for the football team. Anything else to add to that, John, you think of?
Other than I talked to Tony Machiney earlier, he said, "Can you go out and make sure it's done right, and let me know?" I said, "Tony, I will." He mentioned something to the effect of the plaque, and I, his suggestion was that he thought it should be somewhere where people could see it, and I said, "Don't worry, we'll make sure of that." So, let him know that you said what you said.
And also, last Friday was First Friday down in the harbor, a great turnout down there, and as always, you remind everybody to shop locally and help the local businesses during this time of year. John, any?
Yeah, before you move on, Friday night, and I kinda told Lorraine what had happened, and written by Mara, Al doesn't know about this, probably, a lot of things fly below the radar, but Friday night, I got a call about 10 o'clock, that there was an accident